Not, we have an exec session at the end of this meeting where we'll. Continue any deliberation we need to do after conducting board business here in the public part of the meeting. And the actions that result out of our executive session will come after that final session at the end of the meeting. Let's just give it a minute for Janet to join. Okay, so item number five on our agenda is election of board officers. It's normally our, our practice to elect board officers for that coming year at the end of the regular June meeting. In this year, since the regular June meeting went so late, we, the board elected to table that until this special meeting. Before we get into board officers, I'll just briefly review the duties of each office as, as found in our bylaws. I'm gonna just read these real quickly, so everyone's aware of duties of each position. Resident, uh, duties of the chairperson. Chairperson shall determine the initial agenda of all meetings of the board and other directors may propose agenda items or other amendments. The chairperson shall preside at all board meetings, execute documents in the name of the corporation as the board has agreed to by board action. And authorize expenditure of funds as set forth in policies as described in section ten dot two. The chairperson shall have other such duties and responsibilities as determined by resolutions or policies of the board. The chairperson shall vote on all matters as a director on the board. For purposes of these bylaws, if the board elects co-chairs instead of a chairperson vice chair. Then chairperson also means co-chairs, the co-chairs were determined the division of responsibilities and duties. A vice chairperson. The vice chairperson shall perform duties of the chairperson in the chair's absence. Shall oversee the board's compliance with these bylaws, so the board employs necessary corporate formalities. And shall have each such other duties or responsibilities as determined by resolutions and or policies of the board. The MCS board has at different times had both a chair vice chair model. And a model like our current one where we have co-chairs, both of those are permitted by bylaws. Secretary office, the secretary shall have overall responsibility for all record keeping and for notices to the board of any board meeting. The secretary shall have oversight responsibility for compliance with the notice requirement of public meeting law. The secretary may delegate these responsibilities provided that he or she oversees such a delegation. Secretary shall record and or supervise recording in the minutes. Of all meetings of the board and present the transcribed minutes at or before the next preceded board meeting. Minutes shall comply with public meeting laws of ORS section one nine two six five oh. And except in the case of exec session should not and shall include at least the following names of all board members present. Motions, proposals and resolutions proposed in their disposition, results of all decisions. And the vote of each director, the substance of any discussion referenced in document discussed. It, I'll note that in recent years, for about the last four years, the board through resolution has elected. Live streaming and posting of recordings. As a substitute for meeting minutes, that's why we we live stream these meetings and post recordings. Under Oregon Public Meeting Law is defined by the Attorney General. A publicly available reporting of a meeting does satisfy as meeting minutes. And that is what the board has elected to do more recently. Duties of treasurer. Treasurer will work closely with the executive director in all matters related to budget and disbursement of funds. The treasurer shall be responsible for the maintenance and or oversight of proper records of all financial and banking transactions of the corporation. Shall have authority to sign finances. As described in article ten and shall comply with all financial policies of the board. Treasurer shall report the financial condition of the corporation in each board meeting and shall report on the annual returns. Filed with federal and state government to the board each year, treasurer shall have authority to authorize expenditure of funds as set forth in policies as described in section ten dot two. The treasurer should have such other duties and responsibilities as determined by resolutions and or policies of the board. I'll note that historically, certainly for my entire five years in the board. Many of the, the execution of these duties of treasurer falls on as part of the business manager's purview. With treasurer working with the business manager as needed. To sign documents after reviewing them. Anybody any questions about duties of various roles? So that brings us to discussion of election of officers for the upcoming year. The, the bylaws state that the board, the board is obviously us, us as individual members are an elected entity. We ourselves elect our officers from within our ranks. So we do need tonight to elect either two co-chairs or a chair vice chair. A secretary and a treasurer. Historically, the board has kind of handled this by, you know. Folks expressing their willingness or interest. And us kind of agreeing on a slate of officers and then the board votes on that slate. So with, with that said, I'll start the discussion by just noting that in my five years in the board, I've been chair or co-chair for four of them. And I would very much, I very much need to not be a board officer in the upcoming year. So it's, it's my hope that, that we can find a way to fill these positions from the other four current members of the board. I'd also like to note that the bylaws do allow for. Change of board officers at any time per motion of the board, so this is not a. Typically, we elect officers in June and that's the, that's the slate for the, for the year. Should there be a need to change that throughout the year, that that's certainly something that can be done and it actually has been done in this past year. At a couple of different times when it's been needed. Open it up to comment from other board members.
I'd like to thank Thad for his service. It's been a pleasure working with you as a co-chair Thad. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness with which you approach the meetings, how prepared you are, the tremendous amount of work you put into. Having things run smoothly and just, yeah, deep admiration for all you've given to the school, the community, the board. And, yeah, and I would like to also recognize and appreciate the work that Dan has done. To learn from Thad, to sort of. Carry on being, it's a, it's a huge job and I think you both have done it really well. That, Dan, my hope would be that you would continue on as board chair. I would be willing to serve as your, your vice chair. I'm, I'm a little nervous about being a co-chair, given. My obligations to family and work, but. Yeah, so I, I will put in a vote for, for him remaining as our, as our chair. And my willingness to, to support however I can. If someone else would like to be co-chair or vice chair. I'd also have, be happy to serve in any of the other roles and would just like to, to say so, so I would be happy to be an officer. And short of being board chair, which I don't feel ready or prepared to do. I, yeah, happy to help.
Thank you, Julia. I think you might be on mute there, Marie.
Thanks, Julia, for stepping up. Thanks, Thad and Dan for leading us. And I'm the newest member and I hold the title of treasurer, which I don't feel fit. For, so I. Would like to ask my colleague Avalia if she would take that role on as she is such a seasoned. Find it expert in business, being a business consultant specialist. And I would be happy to offer my services as a secretary. Support Dan and Julia as chair and vice chair. Let me know what you all think.
Thank you, Marie. Avalia, any thoughts?
Well, first of all, thank you, Thad. It's been amazing to just. Being able to be part of this and all that you bring in is keep everything. Going so smoothly as well as Dan. I think you both have done an amazing. Work. Then I second with Dan being our. Chair and Julia, thank you, and I also was thinking of nominating that, that you could be vice. And I. I'm happy to serve in whatever position you guys need me to.
Thank you, Avilia. Dan.
Well, I appreciate the support. I appreciate Thad, the leadership that you have shown and the diligence to detail that you have, something that I will strive for. You know, being a chair is not easy, being on this board has not been easy. It's not something that. As of late, I've really been looking forward to, but it's something that we've signed up and have a responsibility to the community for, and so I'm willing to do that.
Okay, thank you, Dan. So I, I think I'm kind of hearing a, a, a potential slate of officers that would have Dan Watson as chair. Julia as vice chair. Avalia as treasurer. And Maria secretary. Did I get that right? I would like to make a motion that the board elect that slate of officers as stated. Do we have a second for that? Thank you, Julia. All in favor? Anyone opposed to that, please verbalize your opposition. Okay, thank you, everyone. That brings us to item number six, our pace policy renewal. Did all the board members receive the? Our, our, our pace insurance policy renewal?
Thad, there was one point that you were adding. I don't remember if you're adding as a five eight, five B.
Yeah, you're right. We did add a point right after election of officers, so. We do have two vacated positions per the resignations I read at the beginning of the meeting. Our bylaws stipulate that when a board position is vacated outside of an election cycle. That the remaining board members appoint. A board member that would serve on whatever's remaining in that term. So I believe Cindy's term has two years remaining. And Leah's has three minus one month. So those would be the two positions. In the past, the way we've conducted that process is the board kind of decides on a timeframe. During which we'll, we'll accept applications for those open board seats. The applications are the very same ones that. Perspective board members fill out to, to, to be considered in an election cycle. The board then, you know, in public session, had, you know, at the end of that timeframe, reviews those applications, can have opportunity to ask. Candidates questions and then ultimately votes on. Appointment. Of applicants to the remaining positions. We have filled a number of board positions over the years via appointment. Typically, we. Typically, we accept applications for no less than one month. You know, I, I think it's, I, I personally feel that's a minimum timeframe to allow. You know, appropriate time for community members that might be considering the commitment to give it proper consideration. And, and to be able to submit an application. I think it's important for that timeframe to be long enough that. You know, everybody in the community that might want to. Throw their hat in the ring, so to speak, has the opportunity to do so and. That there's no possibility of the application phase being truncated to the extent that it excludes people, either intentionally or unintentionally. So I, I would encourage everyone to consider. You know, a, a motion that stab, you know, establishes a timeframe. You know, ending either end of July or middle of August, end of July would be one month. Middle of August would be a little bit longer than that. You know, one possibility is a timeframe that accepts applications up. To, you know, the week before maybe our regular August meeting. Or it could be the regular July, July meeting, although that's coming up really soon. And then we'll point officers then. That's just my recommendation, but I'll, you know, leave it up to. You know, room here, space for everyone else to weigh in. Now, go ahead, Dan.
I feel like. You know, at a minimum, our regular August meeting gives us the timeline where we don't. You know, we give it at least a month, but it also allows us to have that during a normal meeting. That would be my move.
I agree.
Go ahead, Marie.
Yeah, I say, I support that. I think folks are on holiday, out of town. I think we need a little bit more of a timeframe to allow. People the time to apply. They've got their kids with them. It's harder. I'm in favor of August.
So I'd like to make a motion then that the board elect to accept applications for two open seats. Until the day before the August regular board meeting. They, they exactly that meeting to TBD. And I'd like to direct that as part of that motion that we ask our secretary to work with. Daphne on, you know, posting the, the, the fact that we're collecting applications and the timeline for doing so. It's a, it's a pretty familiar process because we do it every year for elections as well, so it's not a high effort thing. But I'll, I'll move that we. We, we accept applications up to the day before our regular August meeting. And, and that we direct Marie to, as our new secretary. To, to work with Daphne on making sure that's posted publicly as soon as possible. Thank you for the second, Dan. All in favor? Right, is anyone opposed to that motion? Okay, thank you, everyone. Now that brings us to item number six, our pace policy renewal. Has everyone had a chance to look at the pace renewal? I just. I, Janet, was there any, oh, any, any specific content in that piece for no that you wanted to draw our attention to?
Only the fact that I went ahead and asked Bernadine to leave the security guard off. We can always add him back in at a later date. It would cost, you know, close to three thousand dollars. Just in, you know, insurance fees to add the guard. So if we did decide on a security guard, there would be an extra three thousand through pace.
Okay, yeah, so just so everyone's aware that, you know, our, our pace insurance covers, covers a variety of things. And, you know, that could constitute significant liabilities to the school or to the board or to employees of the school. And the, the rates for. Coverage of, of certain components of that coverage do go up. When we have an armed guard on campus, so we can add that coverage back if we. Choose as a board to, to have an armed guard on campus next year. But we'll, we'll see the detail cost of that in our budget discussion here in a bit, but the. I, I, I believe you're right, Janet, that the, the, the incre- the increase, the incremental insurance cost is about twenty nine hundred dollars, so. Three thousand, basically, to, to, you know, overhead. Extra insurance costs associated with it, with an armed guard. So that we, I think as a board, when we consider the budget, we just need to think of that as part of the cost of an armed guard. That's how I would encourage everyone to think about it. Are there any other changes to this pace coverage versus, you know, the year we're just finishing, Janet? Is there any other changes we should be aware of?
Honestly, Bernadine would be the one to have explained that. I just know, of course, every year the cost goes up, so this year is no different. I don't believe there were any significant changes.
So I'm looking at the first page and I'll just detail, there's a few things. Below is a list of changes that we implemented effective July first. Additional coverage for fungus resulting. See fungus resulting from covered loss. Coverage related remediation of fungus and mold caused by coverage loss, current limit is ten thousand or ten percent of loss, whichever is less. The change here is the ten percent precision is provision is removed and the limit is kept at ten thousand dollars. Change number two, proration of pace per occurrence aggregate loss limit. In property, coverage document and the earth movement and flood endorsements. End result in this scenario would be that each member's maximum possible limits in such an occurrence would be the same percentage of their individual total limit of indemnification. I don't really understand that change as well as I'd like to, to be honest. I don't know if anyone else has read it, but I, it doesn't look like it's something we really have a choice about. Current language updated to account for wildfires. I'm sure everyone's aware that. Insurance companies across the country, especially in the West Coast, are changing their. Language around wildfire coverage. I believe that's all the changes relative to the current year that are represented in this policy. Are there any other questions the board might have? I can entertain a motion to, for the board to approve adoption of this coverage as reviewed for the upcoming year. We have such a motion. Thank you, Dan. Second. Thank you, Julia. All in favor? All right, anyone opposed, please verbalize your opposition. Okay, thank you. That brings us to item number seven, budget review, and I'd like to. Share my screen, just give me a second. Janet, did you want me to share my screen and have you introduce the budget? Would you like me to?
Yes, I'd like you to go ahead and share your screen and I can go through. Three pages and then I'm going to have you jump in whenever you feel the need. But I do have a few things to say. Once you share your screen, we'll be.
No, can you not see? Oh, here.
No.
Now you can see it, probably.
There we go. And I know it's going to be hard to see the numbers, but the first page.
Yeah, and this all was sent out to the board as well, so.
Okay.
We all pulled up.
So page one shows the three percent and the four percent cola and enrollment scenarios. Plus all the sources of revenue and proposed expenses. And I know the, the top half was sent to Leah and Dan for negotiations with the CBA. And then the bottom. Is the cost of the CBA that. Some obvious costs, some hidden costs, so those are all. On each line item. And then the bottom blue section underneath the cost of CBA is facilities that Carol presented. As far as security guard, additional liability, our lift replacement. The elevator fencing, moving hillside. So on, Thad, you want to speak?
Yeah, if that's okay, I'll.
Yeah.
Just want to clarify a few things, so. When, with the proposals on cola, I just want to make it clear that those, the, 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 the cost of living increase. Represented here, the three and four percent in these different scenarios. Is for all school staff, so that cool is, has always historically been negotiated. With the MTA, but then applied to all staff, so that would include. Classified staff as well as administration. I just want to make sure really clear on that. The, the thing that makes this year's budget a bit more complicated than sort of a typical year or that we, we have things in this budget that. Are not things that would normally be part of a sort of annual operating budget, so those, those include. You know, most of the things in the bottom blue. Where my cursor kind of is now, so, you know, security guard and the liability insurance associated with that, replacing an elevator, fencing. Moving hillside, so just to give everybody an overview of how, you know, our funding basically works, I mean, our, it's similar for every school in Oregon, but. We get a certain amount of money from the state via our sponsoring district. And that's based on our enrollment. The funding statement that we have from our district right now is based on the assumption that our enrollment will be a hundred and eighty students. And we'll start out the year funded at that assumption. The way school funding works is that if we finish the year next year, short of that hundred and eighty students, or frankly, different, it could be bigger, it could be smaller. That, the, the change that comprises in funding is corrected on a two-year rolling delay. So if we were to finish next year, let's say with a hundred and seventy students instead of a hundred and eighty. We will then be, we will have been given to more money. That, you know, we'll be given a hundred and eighty students worth of money, but only had a hundred and seventy, and that correction. Will show up in our funding statement two years down the road. So that's, that's one thing to sort of keep in mind. I believe our current enrollment for next year is at a hundred and fifty-four. So that's why that scenario is on here. It is not the case, to my understanding, though, that our funding would start the year. At a hundred and fifty-four typically, it's always been the case that our funding arrangement. Is based on an assumed enrollment and that has been declining steadily over the years and this, this last year we were funded at one eighty-five. This year we're being funded at one eighty. We, if, if we end up short of one hundred and eighty next year, we do need to plan for. Two years down the road. A, a, a holdback in, in the money we get from the state. And we can speak to that when we talk about reserves. So that, there are all the other sources of funding included in here like Esther Grants and SIA, those work a little bit differently. But the bulk of our daily, you know, operational budget funding really comes from the state school fund. The, again, the things in the bottom here. Like moving the hillside property, fencing, elevator replacement. Those are things that, you know, no school our size, in my opinion, would typically take out of their. Operating budget, you know, state school fund operating budget, because it, you know, it would have such a big impact to our. Operational budget, you know, there's no way we could not, we could replace the elevator without. Having to cut staff positions, which we wouldn't want to do. Our, our salaries and associated payroll costs are about eighty-five percent of our spend every year. So. You know, that, that just to keep, keep things in perspective. Between eighty and eighty-five percent. So when we think about these capital, these other improvements that are sort of outside the norm of what we do at any given year. It's really important to think about those in the context of. Reserves that we can use to pay for those things, so that we don't have to compromise our annual operating. Budget to do so. And Bernadine's done a really good job here of itemizing some of those reserves, so. In the, in the red box in the lower left here, you can see that. Are projected and it's projected because the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three year isn't over and to the books aren't closed on it until July. But we're projected to end this year. With two hundred and sixty-nine thousand more dollars than we thought we would. So, so that's sort of money that's left over at the end of this year that didn't get used. The school, the, the, in past years, we as a board have also set aside. A hundred and eighty thousand dollars designated as an enrollment reserve. The purpose of that is to be able to. Cover any enrollment difference related holdbacks that might come two years down the road, like I explained a little bit ago. So that we don't have to make any knee jerk, so to speak. Budget cuts because we had a blip in our enrollment two years ago. So, as, as for instance, if, if we, if we, if we do go through next year and we do fall well short. Of that hundred and eighty students that, at which we were funded. We do currently have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in, in reserve specifically designated. For covering that. That's not the right word, but payback that we know we're going to owe to, in our, in our two, you know, two years in the future. Funding statement. We also have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the board has set aside for. Building reserve that's typically been used for, you know, unexpected or unanticipated facilities needs. You know, and to set aside for the, the, the board to be able to cover those needs again, should they, should they come up unexpectedly. Without having to compromise our operating budget and, and ability to run the school every day and, and keep the staffing where, where we want it to be. The school also has a capital building fund that's been long, long been growing. You know, that to be used with the long-term goal of helping us to either build a new building. Or in some other way expand or improve our campus. So these are some specific reserves that we have outside of our school fund. The enrollment reserve, building reserve and capital building fund do kind of have, you know, some parameters around how we can use them. We can't use the capital building fund to pay salaries, for instance, that's, that would violate the, 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 the purpose of why that. We can't use the capital building fund to pay salaries, for instance, that's, that would violate the, 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 the purpose of why that money was put aside. The, the projected end fund balance surplus that we'll end this year with is not specifically targeted for any particular thing. So we, you know, we do have the, the flexibility to pull that forward into next year's operating budget, uh, if, if need be. I feel like I'm talking a lot and I've tried to give an overview because I know some of you, this might be your first time sort of looking at a budget uh, for the school top down, and I do have some more that I want to go over, but uh, maybe it's best if I stop. First of all, and say, Janet, is there anything I've said just now that you feel is not accurate or isn't clear?
No, that was clear. Um, and also Bernadine wanted me to remind everybody that if, if you did have any other questions about this, um, budget draft, that she went over it in the May 4th, um, pre-budget presentation. So I know that's on, um, uh, a board recording that people could look back at.
Thank you. Um, what, what questions do folks have now? I've just kind of gone through a lot of information. Does anyone have any questions so far? Right, I'd like to continue then.
So the second page, um, is the draft operating budget with all committed expenses included. Uh, this, this budget requires a transfer of 23,560 from the 22, 23 ending fund balance. So our ending fund balance is sufficient to cover this year's budget shortfall. It's clear that this budget is not sustainable at current, um, enrollment levels, as you can see.
Yeah, so the, the top half of this page shows income, projected income for next year. We are being funded at 180 students. So the, the leftmost column is the the situation for next year. The, the rightmost column, I would encourage everyone to consider as, you know, uh, the, the eventual reality, uh, two years out. If our enrollment stays at 154 for the duration of next year, uh, enrollment's not really measured right at the beginning or the end of the year. There's some kind of a formula where it's measured throughout the year, uh, in a composite years, uh, derived. So, you know, it's, it's never the case that our actual enrollment ends up being what our enrollment's been funded at. It's, oh, we always try with the district to come close. So this, this basically shows that, um, at, at 180 students are funding for next year, we've got a balanced budget. If we use 23,000 of that 269,000, we're going to finish this year, uh, having an, an excess of. But we should expect to owe 230-ish thousand, two years from now, uh, if our enrollment indeed stays at 154 and does not go up, uh, next year. That 233,000 number happens to just, just about be the remainder of the surplus we're finishing this year with. Just as a, as a point of note. Um, and it, it also, uh, is not significantly uh, different from the 180,000 we have set aside as a board over the years to cover enrollment related holdbacks. So I, I know that number is a, a bit of a scary number, uh, if our enrollment, uh, falls short. And I, I agree with Bernadine's assessment that you know, continuing to fund ourselves at the assumption of 180 students, if our enrollment indeed stays at 154 does create an unsustainable scenario, um, in the long run. Uh, it's, it's my feeling that our as a school, our financial situation with respect to reserves and, and fund balance uh, more than supports, uh, an intentional and responsible decision to, uh, forego the need to make damaging, but you know, painful budget cuts for this next year. You know, it is certainly the case that if, if 154 students becomes our new norm and that's just what our enrollment always is. Uh, you know, a year from now, we're going to have to really had to take a hard look at, uh, at the school, uh, operating budget. And since, um, salaries and associated salary classes, 85% of our budget. You know, it's not hard to, to see where the majority of the cuts would have to come from to make up, you know, that kind of, uh, savings. Um, at the same time, I want to say that I feel pretty strongly that the school is in, you know, more than good enough financial position to make an intentional decision to not make those cuts, uh, prematurely. Um, I just think as a board with our primary duties being to the finances of the school, we just need to make sure we're intentional in what we do and that we're informed. I, I do intend to go over some of the reserves. Uh, those are actually on the next page. Um, this details some of our reserves, uh, you know, so I already talked about the building reserve, the capital fund and the enrollment reserve. Um, this is one scenario that, uh, Bernadine's proposed where, uh, to how we can cover, you know, things like the elevator replacement, the fencing, some of the security related upgrades out of our building reserve. And some other things that relate to campus improvement out of the capital fund. You know, I think it could be argued that the fencing even could be done and potentially the elevator, but certainly the fencing could be done out of the capital fund as well, since the, the purpose of that fund is to improve upon our campus. Did I?
That I was just going to say, and specifically middle school for the capital fund, I think, um, allotted for, for middle school development.
Yeah, and that's why, yes, and that's why we see moving hillside, you know, being proposed to be taken upon. So those funds are things that don't, you know, that's money that we've set aside as a board over the past for designated purposes. And this is just an attempted illustration and how some of these non-regular uh, very intentional, uh, facilities upgrades could be funded out of those funds. Um, and then in the bottom there, what would be left there? So the, the 245,000 you see there on the leftmost column, ending fund balance, that's just the end fund balance for this year, this current year. So that's the $269,000 number I talked about earlier that we're going to finish this year in with a surplus minus the 20 something thousand that, uh, that Bernadine carried forward to, to balance the budget at 180 students. So 200, that gives you about 246,000 left. And this shows that should the board elect to have a security guard full-time next year, uh, the, the, the intention here is to show how that that could potentially be funded out of the surplus from this year. And, and we should talk about the security guard and what we want to do on that. I know there's a lot more than just financial considerations there. So we'll need to include that. Um, one final thing I wanted to show, you just find it here. Go ahead. Does anyone have any questions while I'm finding one more thing?
I, I was just going to read one other, um, statement from Bernadine.
Yeah.
She, um, had written, it's the opinion of the business manager. Um, had a smaller cost of living increase been negotiated with the MTA. The resulting operating balance could have been used to bring our food service and teaching assistant salaries to a level approaching a living wage. And that analysis was shared with the board co-chairs previously.
Thank you, Janet. Yeah, um, I was working with Bernadine on uh, a proposal to quantify what it would cost to adjust the, the lowest, uh, pay of our employees at the school, which are typically some of our entry level classified positions. And to make adjustments to that scale to, uh, adjust the bottom of that pay scale to be, uh, closer to a living wage. Um, and I believe the, the, the total cost of that, given our current classified staff makeup was around $40,000. Um, I think it's something the board should consider in the future. I don't know that we're going to be able to really give that the proper analysis and discussion tonight because I don't have the proposal in front of me. I do want to note that, uh, in this, the, this last summer and fall, just remind everyone that the board went through a very intentional exercise to compare the compensation for all of our employees, classified, certified and administration to comparable positions within our sponsoring district. And we, we use the new funding that we, uh, secured with our district entirely to ensure that all of those positions were brought to a, a level that was competitive equal to, not worse than, in some cases slightly better than, uh, the same position within the district. I just want to make that clear, um, so that it, you know, because some, some of you were part of that discussion and some newer board members were not. One final thing I wanted to note just for background and then we can deliberate and discuss is, uh, I, I've presented these reserves. These are part of our end fund balance. So you can kind of think of the end fund balance as what's sort of in our bank account at the end of the year. And parts of that bank account are designated for certain purposes. So, um, you know, as, as denoted here, the, the building reserve, the capital fund and enrollment reserve. And then there's, there, what's left beyond that in the bank account is, uh, is still far, part of our bank account, but it's not, it's, it's, it's not designated for any particular, you know, use. And the, now the, the table I'm sharing now, uh, was provided today from our business manager and it sort of details that you can see the bottom line here is that are unassigned and fund balance right now is, uh, in excess of $2 million. So I want to, um, and I, I feel it's important to note that just because I, I think it's important when a board considers making budget decisions that would not be sustainable, sustainable on a annual ongoing basis that we understand what our overall financial position is from, uh, you know, a, a backup perspective, what do we have in the bank? To, to you know, say, I, I feel very fortunate that the school is in a position where while we know our enrollment is, is likely to take a big hit this next year, that because we have very healthy, dedicated and unassigned reserves, we're in the position to at least ponder, uh, you know, not doing anything drastic right now, because if we don't, we won't be able to, you know, fund, uh, next year's operating budget. We're also in a position to be able to think about really, you know, following through on and funding the security upgrades that we all want to do. Uh, knowing that we have enough reserve and money in the bank, so to speak, that if another unexpected emergency like the roof leaking next year or, you know, all the windows getting broken, you know, and needing to be replaced, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're not going to be broke and unable to address it. I, I don't want to paint a picture that like, there's no scenario that would put the school in financial jeopardy, but I do feel like for the size school we are. We've got a pretty healthy, uh, financial situation right now. That, that, that I, I believe we can leverage to make our current enrollment situation not need to be an overly emergent, uh, thing that requires drastic action. Um, some schools would have to do that and would have to cut, cut positions now in order to be able to operate next year. I would like to think that if we don't do that, uh, this, the stability will, will maintain with, with, with not making those cuts will help us, put us in a better position to increase our enrollment and get it back up to sustainable levels. It would also allow us some more time to if, to, to properly think through how we need to downsize if, if that needs to. Those are my thoughts on the budget. I'm sorry for being so long-winded. Julia, thanks for no call, calling, uh, asking me to stop. Um, and I'm going to stop talking now unless anyone has a question or wants to point anything out. I can switch to whatever page if anyone wants me to do that. Marie, you had a question?
I just, I, I just wanted to thank that for that presentation, um, as I'm a newer member and also for clarifying that the, uh, COLA percentage, um, calculated a to classified staff, uh, that's an important piece that I was not aware of. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So I'd like to kind of, I guess, since there's no questions so far, you know, open up the topic of, uh, security guard. You can kind of see on the leftmost column, a quantification of what that would cost, about $58,000. What are folks' thoughts on that? How, you know? Go ahead, Dan.
Is that a, a decision we need to make right now or something we need to make before the beginning of the year or before staff get back from July break? Um, and is that something that we want to get more, I guess it's more a question, but do we want to get more community input on what they want to see after, you know, having had that be a part of our campus for the last year or for the last, you know, since May or whatever?
Yeah, that's a good question. Janet, do you have any comment on that? Like what the, what, you know, when, by when the company we've been working with needs a commitment?
I don't know when they would need a commitment by, but I would like to just share some information. My last, um, gathering of staff, I had 25 people and I specifically pulled them together to talk about security. So out of 25 staff, nine, um, employees said that they would want to guard. And a couple of them, I was able to ask further details. And one said that when the fence is up, they would, they wouldn't want to guard. So then that's down to eight. And then another one said, well, just for community events. So, um, you know, like eighth grade promotion, family night, things where the, where the campus would be, um, open to community. So, um, that kind of now goes down to seven. And I wasn't able to check with other people if it was a, you know, fast and true, yes, a guard no matter what. But I thought it was interesting, interesting data. And then as far as the fence, there were about 15 out of 25 that said they would like to have a taller, more secure fence. I don't have, you know, family or, uh, community input. I think the board said they were going to reach out to families. But, um, I don't think that happened, but just so you know how staff feels.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? I mean, I, I guess I'd like to propose that regarding the security guard, the board elect not to make that decision tonight, maybe in an effort to both ponder it and, and maybe you know, collect some additional input. Well, board will need to take some action, decide how we want to collect that input if it's a, 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 a public listening session or survey of some sort. That, that, I think that would be my preference. Um, I, I doubt we can wait right up till the day before school starts, you know, to make a decision because presumably the security company will need to know, you know, far enough in advance.
I, I would think so.
I think maybe the, the best way to look at the rest of this is you know, as far as approval, the way that makes the most sense to me is to think of the, uh, you know, there's, there's three components here. There's approving our operating budget and part of that is built-in costs associated with the CBA that we're going to look at here short in a minute. The, the, the middle sort of blue table here does identify. So the, the, the main aspects from a financial perspective of the CBA are the, the, that CBA does include a negotiated, uh, 4% COLA. So that the cost of that 4% is embedded into the, the, the salaries and payroll costs of this upper table. And then there's some other language in the CBA, uh, around PTO and, uh, MTA leave, additional professional development funds and those sort of things. And those are detailed here in this middle table as, you know, financial costs to the school that result from, um, from those changes of the CBA and those, those add up to around $16,000, uh, out of our operating budget. And I, I think these identifiers here are pretty good indicators of, you know, what those items are materially and and how much they cost. So with that in mind, what I'd encourage folks to do is think about this as a, we're, we're, we're really improving two different things. One is an operating budget that includes some built-in negotiated results. Go ahead, Dan.
I just noticed there's a, um, just a matter of clarification there. The association leave cost item is something that's reimbursed by the MTA to, to MCF. So the union pays back that leave time. So the union pays back that leave time. It's just the ability to take that leave time. So that's a line item that 25, 40s. Won't be in the budget because it's something that, that is reimbursed back.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, so the way I look at this is kind of, we have our operating budget and then we have the um. You know, additional sort of. Facilities related expenses that, you know, are outside of our normal operating budget and then we would ideally fund with reserves. Um. The, the, the 4% cola column with funding at 180 students is, is the situation, you know, the operating situation for next year. Uh. Again, with the, the knowledge that if our enrollment isn't 180 next year, there'll be a correction coming two years later. Um, but that, that, that leftmost blue colored column is sort of the. The situation there. So that. That shows our. Operating balance, you know, about $23,000 short uh, of our. Total income. Um, that, that'd be actually closer to 21,000, given the correction you just pointed out, Dan. Um, and the, the, the second page, you recall this document. Showed Bernadine, you know. Carrying forward. 23,000 of the 269,000 we anticipate having left over just from the end of this year to cover that. Uh, and then below that we have, you know, non, nor, non-standard, you know. Uh, items that. You know, further contribute to our spend for just next year. So we've decided to table a security guard decision tonight. Um, and the liability insurance that goes with that. Uh, in last, two week ago, two weeks ago, we had a board meeting where we did sort of express the desire. Pending a budget approval. To replace the elevator, we kind of have to do that. Uh, and to move forward with fencing. Uh, as, as well as some of these other security items. And, and potentially moving hillside. We approve this budget tonight. We're approving, you know, moving forward on these things. But some of these things will require, you know, there'll be space according to the discussion you and I, Janet and Bernadine had today. To, for the board to, you know, improve these individual items as they come more into focus. Uh, throughout the summer. Um. And that, that would show us. If, if we did all these things about. You know, drawing about $275,000 from our reserves in this upcoming year. 58 of that, of which is a security guard that we haven't yet committed to. Um, you know, this number 275 is. Really close actually to. What we're anticipating at 269,000 just having left over. At the end of this year. Um, just as a, as a point of comparison. Um. So I, I, I know this is a big number, a, a big red number, which is not generally good. Um. I, I feel more comfortable with it than I normally would be, you know, in part for a couple of reasons. One, because of the. Significant positive in fund balance we're finishing this year with. Because of the designated reserves we have in place. To cover future enrollment shortfall related uh, holdbacks in our funding as well as capital expenses. And then also because of the significant uh. Unallocated end fund balance, unassigned end fund balance that. We're very lucky to have as a school right now. So I, I, I'm in favor of approving the, the budget as published. Uh, with a, you know, the, 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 I know we're going to talk about the details of the CBA in a minute. Um, I, I'm comfortable with approving the budget. Uh, as published here with a cola 5%. And the, the, the associated extra costs that come from the CBA. Provided that the board just make, I, I think part of that motion needs to be a really intentional statement that. Your acknowledgement that. We, we know we're choosing to uh. Not take drastic measures to correct our operating budget with respect to enrollment this upcoming year. Um, with the goal that doing so and the, you know, achieving the stability that would bring. Uh, we, we expect to help us increase our enrollment. If we find ourselves at this time next year not having realized that increase. You know, then, then we may have to start to make cuts. So that we don't, you know. Slowly dwindle our reserves. Uh, to a point where we no longer have them.
And just a matter of correction, just the earlier you stated a cola 5%, and just want, I know that was just a mistake. It's called 4%.
I'm sorry. Uh, that was a very unintentional statement. I meant for, yeah. Um, does everyone on the board feel like they're reasonably informed about the budget? Have Janet and I done a good enough job sort of? Informing you about not just our budget, but our financial situation? Does anyone not feel like that? Okay. Um. What other? So I, I think I've hopefully expressed my opinion pretty clearly. Um. Does anyone else have an opinion?
I just want to thank Bernadine for putting this together um, for us this evening. Um, I think she did a really nice job.
Yeah, I'd like to say the same and uh. You know, thank you Janet for the interaction the three of us had this afternoon and to sort of clear up. With the. Final place, yeah.
That, just so I'm understanding, your proposal is, is to approve the budget. Um. Does, and then make decisions on the facilities? Up, items individually?
Well, I mean, no, I think, I think approving this budget with the facilities items here is, is kind of an implicit. Uh. Approval of the, you know, the elevator, the fencing. Moving hillside, the security system, the doors, the office relocation. Um. Janet, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that, you know, approving those in the budget means that we're approving allocation of these funds. To do these things, but there's, you know, there, there, there's going to be especially for things like moving hillside. You know, need for further discussion, but before somebody puts the building on a truck and actually moves it or lifts it up with a crane and.
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
Uh, it's very much in the same vein that, you know, when we approve a budget, Julia. For the year, it, it could still be the case that when there's very large expenditures above a certain amount. You know, the, the board still has to approve those um, individually. Um. But approving this budget with these explicit items here does sort of give the. The, 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 the go-ahead to, to those working on these facilities improvements to move forward. Does that answer your question?
Um, it, it does answer my question and I, I guess the one that gives me the most pause is that moving hillside. Um, the. Um. As far as including it, um, and I know I'll just voice my, my opinion on that, that, um, that, that. Uh, getting the, um, you know, the security system and the front doors and the office moved um, and replacing that ADA. Uh, elevator. I all understand that the hillside move, um, I think is um, is one I, you know, that I, that I would slow down if, if it was just me.
Could I talk a little bit about the hillside move?
Yeah.
It might help some people understand. Um. You know, the fact is, um, our humanities teacher is going to be moving down to the annex. I mean, that um. Is a space that could be utilized by one of our middle school class, classes. That leaves a teacher um. Up in hillside alone and the kids are still crossing the street, you know, which has been a concern for a number of years and especially now. Um, and it's not like hillside has to be moved. It doesn't have to be a top priority. Uh, she could stay up there alone. For a number of months and we could go ahead and get the office moved this summer. Um, I know one of my, one of my ideas was to have our math teacher move down into uh. Um, Lisa Stevenson's old room. And that would leave hillside empty so that we could slowly think about how to get it moved over to the annex property. But we can also just leave the math teacher in hillside. And um, go ahead and move the office this summer and then just have the hillside move as a priority because it would be. Very nice to have everything in the front instead of having the kids crossing the street and. The parking lot and the whole deal. Um. But we wouldn't have that same urgency to complete it before August, say. Um, maybe it could be completed during Thanksgiving break or winter. I don't know. I don't know, but I feel like I've heard um. Julia, you talk about this before and um. I think it's maybe on some people's, you know, the bottom of their priority list. But I do think it's an important thing to think about. I mean, if we're rating these in priority, um. You know, I think getting the fencing up for sure, getting the doors for sure, the elevator absolutely. Um. The security system, you know, the intercom system and the cameras. I think all of those take precedent over moving hillside, but it would be. Very nice to have the middle school um, continue to be developed by moving, by moving it to the annex property.
And Janet, uh, you just mentioned a, a possibility where. You know, in order, the hillside could potentially be empty at the beginning of school year if we use. Lisa's current room from one of the middle school classrooms, right?
Yes, like temporarily until we could get hillside moved and then move the office as a second phase. That's one thought.
I mean, I, I personally, like, the biggest thing I'm nervous about with moving hillside isn't so much that uh. That's a, it's the right long-term thing to do is that. Any number of things could make that, including like delays on permits or, you know, just any number of things make it really hard to have that done.
Yeah.
Time for the first day of school. Um.
I agree.
And, you know, setting ourselves up to start the school year where we don't need it right away. Feels to me like it. Uh, you know, that's the hardest part about doing facilities related stuff on a school is that there's so much of it that we just can't do during the school year because it's too disruptive. But uh.
I agree.
But are, are you, just to be, just to clarify, that proposal that we would table the office relocation, obviously until we're not using that intended space.
Well, there are two thoughts. Leave the math teacher in hillside as is. And move the office or move the math teacher into the main building and hold off on moving the office.
Yeah.
Either one way, the kids are crossing the road and there's just one classroom in hillside. Which isn't the best case scenario. Um, the other way, you have all the middle school. Classrooms in the front. You know, behind the security fence.
Yeah. Um.
Have Gizmo, you would have, because we are going down to three base camps next year. So you'd have Gizmo, Lisa Stevenson's old room and then the annex and everyone would be. Um. Um. Um, located inside of the security fence.
So I mean, I, I. Thank you for explaining that. I guess, you know, from a construction sort of. Dependencies perspective. I guess I kind of like the option of. Not that I'm not in favor of the office relocation, but. Delaying that so that we can. Not need to start the year using the hillside building, which should open up flexibility that if, you know, the contractors that need to move it and get it set up. Like can't get it done by. Beginning of September. That's okay. Like it, we can keep going. Whereas if we've already made this and then, you know, then it's like, if it's not done by September and it's like, all right, well, I guess we're not going to do this till next summer.
Exactly. That, that's my thought as well. Um, I, I have talked to the teacher about making the move into Lisa's old classroom. And um. Everyone's on board with that plan. Um. And to me, just having all the students inside of the security fence is, is, is pretty large. Um, not having them.
That would also accomplish that goal, correct?
Exactly. And it would give the breathing space to, to really um, take our time with moving hillside. Hillside would be empty. We can have everything, you know, research put in place before we actually attempt to do it. Just gives that breathing room.
Yeah.
I'll just voice my. I, I really like the idea of moving the office. Um, I, I think having that single point of entry. Has a great amount of appeal where you don't have people just. Coming in the front door and first coming into the campus from the playground and then coming into the front door and kind of into an open building and not being immediately greeted by someone. So. And it's a, it's, um, I understand the conundrum we're in, but I, um, I would probably prioritize that and keep. Um, one classroom in hillside uh. And, you know. Have the students cross into the street, but um. I, I don't know that it makes a big budget difference, but um. I just, I, I see a lot of benefit of moving the office.
I hear your concerns, Julia, and you know, it's, they, they are valid. They are valid. Um. It is a conundrum. Yeah. And, you know, in a perfect world, I'd like to see where that, uh, the, the middle school math teacher is in uh, Lisa Stevenson's old room, short term. But we can't guarantee that.
Um, it, um. Yeah, I, um, this is definitely a conundrum. I do think that. Having the campus completely secured or. Completely surrounded by a fence with designated points of entry should help. In my mind, um. Be able to control who's coming in and out more easily. Um. So I guess what I'm saying is, um, right now because of the lack of fencing, I think there is a real, um. Um. It is problematic in um, the way that people enter into the school. Cause they have to go all the way around to the main entrance. Um, and I, I think that having everybody go through that. Um, Mrs. Stevenson's room, um. Would be ideal if there were no fence. However, I think if there is a fence, it, it seems to me that that would help um, lessen that. Um, stress of uh, not knowing who's coming in. There would be a way to monitor. A bit more closely. I don't know. That's just my thought. Um.
And I, I think you can still have the intercom system and the cameras set up at Mrs. Stevenson's. You know, how we've talked about having a gate between the garage and. Um, let's say the kitchen wall. Um. But you're still buzzing them in and they're still walking through the path of the, the students to get to the front door. If, if we, if we um, have the middle school teacher move into Ms. Stevenson's room. Still can have the intercom, still can have the buzzer, buzz them in, but they're still going. Through the students to get to the front door.
Yeah, I don't know if we. I don't know if I like that idea. It just feels like a really disruptive to learning.
Right. Um, well, I mean, they're not going through Ms. Stevenson's room. I'm saying the intercom and the, and the camera would be outside. Because when the office is moved to Lisa Stevenson's room, that's the setup. There'll be an intercom and a camera and then Daphne would buzz. Um. People in through Lisa Stevenson's door. But I'm saying if, if the math teacher were in that room, you would still have the gate, you would still have the intercom and the camera. Daphne would just manage it from the office upstairs. But they would be going into the campus and to get to the front door to enter the building. So it's, it's hard to imagine everything, but um.
One other concern I have is just um, the amount of sort of intermingling of the middle schoolers with the elementary that's done, you know. It just increased, putting them all in one building increases interactions between middle schoolers and elementary kids and. Having had my, well, anyway, um, I'd also love to hear from the other board members who haven't spoken to this issue and, and I've promised to be somewhat of a timekeeper. So. Um, I'll encourage us to try to um, to move along.
Just quickly, Julia, I'd like to address your comment. Um, we have had middle school in that room. Um, for the past couple of years, so it wouldn't change that way. We would still have middle school kids in Lisa Stevenson's room where she had middle school kids. You know, this year and last year. But I will also say moving hillside down to the annex will alleviate having middle school students going into the main building restrooms, which I see as a. A very, you know, that's, that's a plus. Um, they would use the bathrooms that are in the annex. We'd have, you know, two classrooms there and they could all use those restrooms. Plus there are restrooms in Gizmo. So, once we get this sorted. That would be a, a plus of not having middle school kids using the main building restrooms.
I just want to lay in a little bit on this. I think it's, it's, it's important that we think about. Long-term financially for the school too, and that while there's a short-term cost in moving. The portable down to the annex property over there. There's. You know, if we do end up having long-term budget shortfalls, we have a piece of property there that's worth. A sizable amount of money that could be then. A sizable amount of money that could be then separated from the school if we had to, so. Just trying to provide for contingency. I think one of the things thinking about. Moving the middle school building down there is that there's already infrastructure in place, there's drains in place, so. When that does happen, we have to make sure, make sure that whoever's doing it is aware of that and those, those buildings are placed in the appropriate area so that they can be hooked up to the. Drains that are already there, so that plumbing that exists in those buildings can eventually be used. That's just proper placement based on the infrastructure that was put in place during our last upgrade of that property. And then to speak to the fencing, once the fencing is in, that's another layer of security. Even if we don't move the office right away, we allow, we have. An additional layer of security where someone has two layers to get through to get into the school during the day, so I think it. It's a compromise that makes everything work in a way that allows us to move forward with a greater degree of safety.
Valia, you've had your hand up for a while.
Yes, um, first of all, I want to thank everyone that's been working in facilities. They've done amazing and so much work. I, I personally think that the fencing is going to help a lot and just putting cameras and systems in. And just having all students and teachers in a fenced area might work. It's not the best. But thinking of time and thinking how construction can work, how things can be delayed. We're not in a perfect world and things will be pushed back. I think that's a great. Sure, and even say a one-year term if needed, hold. And. I guess the only thing that I also want to bring up is the fencing. If we decide to move forward with the. The budget of what has been proposed for fencing, I guess, I continue to be a little bit. Reluctant about the west side of what was proposed with the wood. Not see-through fence. I, I guess I would like. To look at a little bit more detail than look into that a little bit further. I know we're really tight in time as well. But I think, um, last meeting, there was a lot of things that were brought up and I kind of also am. Thinking of a professional and also someone that makes sure that. That would be up to code. I haven't really ever seen the school put a privacy fence like that. And I'm talking about the west side.
I, I'd like to say that I also share that exact concern. About the privacy fencing.
And I also, I, I, I kind of wonder if we wouldn't just want to put in the new security fence first to see what it looks like. And maybe it does, you know, kind of block the view enough. It would be nice to just see. It installed and then make a decision about the security fence if it even is still needed.
Yes, I guess, for me, it would be more of, could we get within the timeframe and updated budget? To just even start allocating for that, what would I, what would the difference be? And would it even be feasible for the material? Wives of getting the material on time and then also who's good at the fencing, would it be feasible to still do it during summer if that was to change?
My, my recollection from last meeting is that the plan as posed, which I acknowledge includes the, this, this, the privacy fencing on the west side. Is, is a secured bid with a thirty-day time limit, you know, from a contractor that can get it done. This summer. I, I'm not recalling all the precise details right now, but I think that I do recall that the extra cost associated with the. The, the, the metal fencing on the west side presented some significant challenges with relation to. Procurement rules and put us kind of over a threshold where we needed to obtain multiple bids. In order to move forward, which we have found as a school to be a giant hurdle, just getting three bids can significantly delay things. So I, I believe that my recollection is there was a, a bit of a, a significant link there where. The, the privacy fencing along the, the border with the. With the homes to the west of the property. Helped the entire cost fall under just barely. Where it needs to be in order to not have to go. Seek multiple bids, which again, we've had trouble with every time we've had to get significant bids on anything. We've had trouble just getting three, just getting three bids.
Yeah, and, and I understand and I really, I really take that into heart and with heavy thinking. I guess the next question is, have we made sure that it also meets code for school? Is it even something that's allowable?
Well, I know that this particular fence has been installed in other schools in Portland and surrounding areas.
Go ahead, Marie.
To clarify. Mrs. Carter, are you saying that the privacy fencing has been used at other schools and?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were just talking about the regular fence. No, I don't know about the privacy fencing.
I think the privacy fencing too, I don't know if it needs to be discussed with pace. I just, I have concerns that. If it's not to code, as Valia mentioned, could be problematic.
So am I hearing the board say that they want the security, or I mean, the privacy fencing installed? Is that still the consensus?
Well, I, I think what we're hearing is that, just correct me if anybody disagrees with my summary here, that. The board enthusiastically supports the fencing project and the amount. The amount, the forty-nine thousand five hundred that's proposed in this budget for that fencing. There are some concerns around specifically. The, the detail of the privacy fencing and whether, and to making sure the entire project sort of meets. Coding standards. I, I, I would be personally really surprised if a contractor with a contractor's license would be able to install a fence at a school without. Getting proper permits that come with.
Right.
No code compliance, but perhaps I'm wrong.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I, I was just going to say, like, I, I see it as a potentially. Uh, viable path for the board to consider, you know. Approving the budget as published with respect to this fencing item. Uh, but, but as part of that, you know, directing. One or two board members to, you know, because we, we do also need a new head for the facilities committee since our previous board member that. Chair of the facilities committee is, is, her term is expired. So, you know, the, 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 the final details about privacy fencing and code, I think could be. You know. To delegated to Facilities Committee. Obviously, if that research comes back with a. A cost that falls significantly outside of what the board approves in a budget, then that means the board needs to. Re, you know, deliberate some more.
I was just going to say Dawn texted me and she said, I believe the fencing on the west side was costing us about seven thousand dollars instead of fourteen thousand. So we could take it off the plate for now. And then she's just saying approve the amount for now and then once everyone decides. Uh, on the west side, we can, you know, talk about that.
Yeah, I mean.
One thought I had is I, I think that west side proposal was for a wooden fence that would, you know, it, it's not going to last forever. Um, and it's, if it's seven grand for that, it's, it's not a huge expense, so it could also be. If we like the metal fence around the rest of the property, that ultimately we would, we would do the whole property with that. There may be somewhere we can shave off. It sounds like the difference between metal and wood is. Uh, seven thousand, so if we wanted all uniform, that black fence. Maybe there are, we could talk to the contractor about somewhere else we could give up seven thousand dollars. A gate or something. I don't know what else they've got in mind. Some of the temporary fencing. And, and then do the metal all the way around, but I would be inclined to approve. The figure for the fencing as is, and then have some board members get engaged in facilities and, and get some more information.
Yeah, I second.
All right, so I, I think that, that covers the fencing item. What else on the facilities we've, we've talked about? I mean, are we comfortable? I, I'm comfortable approving all the facilities projects here at the stated amounts. The only sort of. Questions I have are. Whether it's really feasible to get the Hillside building moved this summer and, and the relation that has to like. You know. Moving the office prematurely. I'm, I'm also supportive of the office move. I just. Those two items seem to be a little bit dependent on each other. When we factor in the need to. You know, we got to be able to, we got to have a classroom. At the beginning of the school year, so that's either going to have to be our long-term intended office location. Or the Hillside building, if it's the Hillside building, then that kind of means if. It can't get moved this summer, then it's not getting moved until. The following summer.
I mean, I would say it's possible if it was empty, I would think it would be possible to start the process and maybe it does take September, October. I, I just don't know.
But then that would mean we wouldn't want to move the office this summer, correct?
Well, the thought is, if we had a little breathing room for moving Hillside and maybe it doesn't happen until September, October. It would be a short term. The, the middle school math teacher would only be downstairs, um, short term until we get middle school moved. Hillside moved and, and set up. I mean, to me, it's possible that it could happen by Christmas and then move the office down over one of the breaks, Thanksgiving or Christmas break. Just a thought.
Yeah.
I think I voiced the most concern about not moving the office, but I agree with those that have pointed out that the fence alleviates some of the concern about people just walk, meandering into the campus.
So none of those dependencies really change the budget approval. I think they just sort of imply like a preferred priority, you know. You know, they, they don't really change the amounts any. What other questions do folks have on the budget or, you know, do folks want, I think I've stated my comfort level with. The, the four percent cola, you know, leftmost blue column here. How, how, how do others feel as far as their comfort level with that? Okay, well, I, I, I'd like to make a motion then that the board adopt the budget as proposed here in the, the, the. The leftmost blue column with a cola of four percent. And the associated additional costs with the P, with the CBA. Negotiations, we're going to review the CBA here in a minute and. If the result of that review, you know, negates this decision, then we'll come back to this. Uh, with a funding of a hundred and eighty students, obviously recognizing that. Our enrollment may not be a hundred and eighty next year, and if we finish, if we get to this, this point a year from now. And it looks like our new norm is for, you know, a hundred and fifty-something students that. We'll, we'll need to. To, to ponder some more aggressive adjustments to our sort of annual operating spend. But I'd like to propose that we. We approve the budget as published here. With, with the intent, with, with the explicit intention to. To use reserves as identified here to pay for some of the facilities projects. Dan, thanks for the second. Do we have any other, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Please vocalize your opposition. All right, thank you. And I just want to thank Bernadine and Janet for the work that went into having this ready for today. As well as Dan and Leah for all the work that went into the CBA negotiations. There's a lot to go in, and the facilities committee and everybody in. The community working on these facilities projects. This year's budget approval is really involved, you know, required a convergence of a lot of different efforts by a lot of different people. Um, this is a, you know. A, a more complicated than usual year from that perspective, and I, I thank everyone that contributed to that. All right, that brings us to item number eight, the CBA contract. That contract, the fifty-two pages of that was sent out. About a week ago for the board to review by Dan. Changes in that language were explicitly identified, so they're easy to see, changes relative to the previous CBA. From a financial perspective, the CBA includes a negotiated four percent cost of living increase. As I mentioned in the budget we just approved, that historically the board has always extended that same increase to non-MTA staff. Uh, the budget we just approved had that built in. Uh, it also included some additional costs to the school to the tune of about, I think, twelve or thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, associated with some of the provisions like extra PD time. That's, that are built into the proposed CBA. Um, Dan, did you feel the need to note any other, any other, anything else about the CBA that's being proposed?
Now, just, uh, one of the things there, you know. A lot of the changes were language-based, the other ones that weren't, uh, kind of didn't have any financial impact, they were. Best practices or ORS updates, a lot of those things that went through there. But I'm happy to try and answer questions if someone else has a specific question about any part of it.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but my read of the C, the proposed CBA includes the opportunity one year from now to. Renegotiate COLA for the next year, which is a standard practice that we've done. Uh, as well as.
The benefits.
Benefits, right.
Yeah, so it's, um, just in light of, you know, our budget complexity this year, those were tabled. Uh, the benefit side was tabled and, and a. Committee is going to be formed to look at, you know, benefits and what will best fit all staff. And what options we'll have, and so instead of trying to rush it, get it done, the proposed and adopted. Uh, way forward there and then for, yeah, again, for the COLA for next year as an opener to revisit that, see where we're at.
Yeah, so just to fill our way in on that, there are some, we've made some changes to our benefits package over the years to try to better align with. You know, comparable benefits packages in our area. We do still fall short. Uh, in certain areas, I, I think the biggest one, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, is with respect to. Access by dependence of our employees and what that costs. Um, we do fall short of, uh, uh, other districts in the area with respect to that. I don't. Negotiations this year didn't seem to, you know, especially when compared to our enrollment situation. Didn't uncover a, a way to significantly improve that aspect of our benefits without significant cost to the school. And so the decision was made to table that, uh, but to put a provision in the contract to revisit next year in spring.
Correct, and then to have that committee be ready to bring in, bring in the recommendations to whoever the negotiators are for that. Reopen, so that there's a path forward that's been. Taken into account all stakeholders, but also the ability for us to better serve our staff.
And does anyone else have any questions or anything they want to ask about or observe about the CBA? If not, we can entertain a motion to approve the CBA as recommended by our negotiating team. Uh, is that the first from you, Valia? Uh, and a second from Julia? All in favor? Right, if, if opposed, please, uh, 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 vocalize your opposition. All right, that brings us to item number nine, which is just a, we put a placeholder for facilities updates and decisions. I. I think we've probably covered most of that to the extent we need to tonight, but let's use this as an opportunity to. Talk about the facilities committee real quickly, so, um. The facilities, we, we can decide typically in July, the board sets their committee structure for the year and, and appoints, you know, various board members to chair certain committees. I think given the, given the, the pace of some facilities related things, we should probably tonight. Uh, 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 appoint a, a chair of the facilities committee so that, you know, we can maintain continuity there and keep these projects moving forward. Chair of the facilities committee just, you know, means you, you, you call the meetings, you publish the agenda. Facilities, you know, board committee meetings are public meetings, so we need to notice them twenty-four hours in advance. And publish minutes of the meetings, the minutes for facility or commit. Committee meetings are typically, you know, focused on identifying action items and the material content and what is discussed. Uh, we've never posted recordings of committee meetings. Facilities, an upcoming facilities committee meeting would be an excellent place to. Revisit some of the details about the west side, you know, fence aspect of the fencing project. Um, do we have any board members that are interested in filling the, the vacated chair, facilities committee chair position? Um, do we have any board members that are interested in filling the the vacated chair, facilities committee chair position?
Um, I could step up to the plate if. Necessary.
Okay, um, and we can revisit that long-term chair, you know, uh in our discussion to sort of set committee structure. Uh, next month, so um I'm I'm kind of honestly just kind of think towards, you know. We we probably don't want to wait until the July meeting and have nothing happen on facilities because we don't have a chair of that committee. So Marie, if you would be willing to fill that position at least for the short term. Uh, as a point of contact uh for facilities-related items, I think that would be really awesome.
Okay, happy to do it.
So I'll make a motion that the board uh uh appoint Marie as our. Facilities committee chair until such time as we revisit uh our entire committee structure and potentially make changes at that time. Uh, do we have a second? Thank you, Julia. All in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, that brings us to item number ten, our executive director report. Um, can I turn that over to you, Janet?
Yes, thank you, Thad.
You bet.
You want to go ahead and share, share my document?
Absolutely.
I know it came in late today, so I don't know if everyone had a chance to read it, but. Um, I'll go over everything right now. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Um, as Carol Dear Holt's term has just expired on the MCS board of directors. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Carol for her work on the board over the last four years. In the school growth committee, she and I worked together with numerous teachers and staff members for three years. To identify the needs of the school in ways that would impact student learning growth. She has led the facilities committee this year during a very project-heavy time. She attended the ED finance committee meetings this year. Carol was instrumental in preparing a presentation for Dr. Bernal, D twenty-one superintendent. That led to a six percent increase in our state school funding, which in turn led to an increase in staff salaries. I'd like to acknowledge and thank Carol for her extreme dedication to Moser Community School. And not just as she served on the board, but really for the last twenty years. So, thank you, Carol. Staff retention has been at its highest level in recent years. I'd like to attribute that to the increase in our salary schedules. Our retention and recruitment bonuses and our strong staff community. Um, my next session section is just about additional administration and teacher professional development outside of um. Uh, trainings that we scheduled during school hours. Uh, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Frazier, our Kinder first grade team, both attended a STEM training. For early childhood educators in Condon, Oregon earlier this year. And Ms. Frazier reports, uh, we gained knowledge about different STEM activities and how to incorporate the activities throughout our day. This training also allowed us to intentionally think about how we are already including STEM into our lessons. And got us excited about hands-on multi-age math next year. Uh, Ms. Holmes and Ms. Goddard attended a Kim Sutton one-day math conference for elementary teachers that focused on strategies to improve. Math fact fluency. Very valuable training for them. Uh, Ms. Langley, uh, Daphne and I attended a webinar from the Breakthrough Coach. Ms. Langley and I attended four half-days and Daphne attended two half-days. So this educational training for administrators and school leaders focuses on working as a team. To become more efficient, focused, and productive to increase overall student achievement. And Ms. Langley is also actively pursuing a doctorate of education degree. Uh, pending board approval below for the SEL teacher, I'd like to give you information about our social emotional uh program for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The interview with our internal applicant went exceedingly well. We discovered through the interview process her letters of recommend. Recommendation, her knowledge and support of MCS. Her strong connection with the students and staff and her twelve-year employment with MCS. Lisa Stevenson would be a perfect fit for a new SEL position. She is currently enrolled in an SEL certification program, which she will complete by the end of June. She's also enrolled in the um Castle SEL school-wide implementation class. While she is on the waitlist for two other classes, uh, which are being a trauma-aware educator. And being a trauma-sensitive educator through OEA, she has started another class. Trauma-informed pedagogy through the NEA. She also plans to enroll in restorative practices. And SEL relationship skills as well as doing a two-day uh DBT. Training, which is dialectical behavioral therapy with Kay Alton in the fall. Ms. Stevenson attended the More Than a Rainbow LGBTQ plus training at Columbia Gore GSD. And completed an hour and a half um DEI diversity, equity, and inclusion webinar, both in May. Many of these trainings are free through the Oregon Education Association and the National Education Association. As you can see, Ms. Stevenson is committed and excited to take on this new role at MCS. Schools across the country are currently utilizing creative methods, which are considered to be best practices. To retain their staff and grow their teacher. Grow their teacher pool in-house. So I'm happy to report that we've been ahead of the curve in hiring Ms. Rogan. Mrs. Wager, Ms. Stevenson, and Ms. Langley. The second half of our um SEL program next year. Um, Kim Lubin, who is a dual-certified as a licensed clinical social worker. And a certified school counselor will partner with Ms. Stevenson when the need arises. She will also facilitate SEL professional development for staff as needs are identified. Our contract with her is approximately four hours a month. Um, our SA SIA uh twenty-two, twenty-three, quarter three reporting has been approved by the Oregon Department of Education. Bernadine and I are working on a zero balance by June thirtieth uh with our remaining SIA funds. Ms. Langley and I will both attend the first available Belante um training, and that is threat assessment and disaster response. Which was highly recommended by Amy Hampton, Director of Student Services for D twenty-one in January. That's the first training that's available. Um, she has also invited me to the community safety assessment team meetings, which meet several times a year. Um, and then I attended the Wasco County Crisis Response Team meeting on Tuesday, June twentieth. Jessica Cattler um from Mid Columbia Center for Living is working on implementing a recovery committee. To put supports in place in the case of a crisis situation. Um, and then I'm also looking into online trainings in relation to threat response and effective communication this summer. The next crisis meeting is August fifteenth. And then um some of you may remember a Scholastic Book Fair that resulted in three thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars in sales, which gave. The teachers one thousand sixty-seven dollars to spend on books for their classroom libraries. I just want to thank Ms. Ms. Smith for organizing and running the book fair. Um, before I move on to requests for action, are there any questions about um anything that was in my ED report up to this time? And I can't see you, so Thad, if you can see everybody, do you mind?
Yeah, I don't see any. Does anyone have any questions? No, I think you're good to continue.
Okay, um, next section section is requests for action staffing. Um, I'd like to request the board hire the following positions. Uh, Lisa Stevenson, SEL licensed position. Lisa's charter school registry license expires on January third, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Crystal Marlin, K-three literacy teacher position. She has a reciprocal teaching license which expires on June sixth. Twenty twenty-four, and she plans to get her Oregon teaching license next. Jacob Lemons, K-eight PE and middle school health teacher position. Jacob will either have a charter registry or a restricted license depending on the timing over the summer. And then Isabel Lopez, part-time custodial position, two hours a day. Uh, she'll be a subcontractor. And that is um. I know I probably didn't have to put it in my request for action, but that really is bringing somebody in for two hours a day. To help uh Mitch with um. Recycle and garbage, cleaning all bathrooms and just really keeping the grounds um. Clean, garbage, you know, debris picked up um. Sidewalks blown off, things like that, so um. And we have found somebody to fill that position.
Thank you, Janet. Does anyone have any questions about the request for action? Uh, if not, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the the recommended uh hires um. For as proposed. Do we have a second for that? Thank you, Dan. Uh, all in favor? If anyone's opposed, please vocalize your opposition. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Janet.
You're welcome. And um just to let you know, the last position that we need to fill is middle school science teacher. Um, we have not found anybody to fill that position as of now, but um not losing hope. Um. So next, my last session is just enrollment, and I'm giving you the projected numbers for twenty-three, twenty-four, all of the um. The firm enrollment um paperwork that's been turned in. So pre-K, we have twelve, which is our cap. Um, kindergarten through fifth grade, a hundred and eight students, six through eight, forty-four, and I think we just enrolled another eighth grader uh. Today, so that'd be forty-five. Um, so total K-eight enrollment would be a hundred and fifty-three. That does not include the pre-K. That's a separate count. Um, hundred and fifty-three um kindergarten through eighth grade. As of now.
Thank you, Janet. Do you have any questions for Janet on her report?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And I would just like to mention also, um, with our new K-three teacher, we now have five bilingual staff members. Um, which I'm extremely excited about. It it's the first time that's ever, the number's been that high, so it's really nice to have so many bilingual um and staff members.
Thank you. Right, that brings us to item number eleven, uh executive session under ORS one-nine-two dot six-six oh dot two B. To review and evaluate employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee, or staff member who's not requested open hearing. Um, we'll adjourn to the same executive session link, board members that we were in previously. Uh, for those attending the public session, when when we're done with that exec session, we'll come back to this link. Uh, to for any uh uh decisions or actions that need to be taken.
Thad, can we take a few-minute break before?
Yeah, I'd like to suggest we take, uh, is five okay with five minutes? So let's, let's join that exec session link at eight twenty-five.
Thank you.